Should I begin?
Yes, please.
Good evening. I'm going to call the March 7th, 2022 Meeting of the Deschutes County Historic Landmarks Commission to Order. My name is Kelly Madden. I am the Chair of the Commission. I am present and accounted for. Commissioner Sharon Leckie is unable to attend tonight. At this point, I will also, I will take roll call and then add the rest of the people that are in the room. Is Commissioner Chris Hoarding-Jones here?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Commissioner Rachel Stemmich?
Present.
Commissioner Dan Ellingson?
Here.
And Commissioner Dennis Schmidling is MA at present, but I am sure he will appear and have some fabulous backdrop behind him. Also present are Tanya Salzman, who is the Staff Liaison Assistant Planner and Landmarks Commission Guru. And we'd like to welcome today our new Planning Manager. So that's Will Groves. So let's give Will a hand. And at the end of the meeting, he will introduce himself and we will talk more about Will and what he's doing and what we're doing. It's nice to see your faces. And here we go. Agenda item number two is the approval of the minutes. Oh, I forgot to mention Trevor. And Trevor is the new IT man in the back who is doing, or person who is doing everything for us. All right, thank you, Trevor. Approval of the November 1st, 2021 minutes. If you have any comments or any items that need discussion, please let me know. I just want to let you know that there are three things you can do if I, if you need to entertain a motion. Please remember if we entertain a motion, we can approve amendments, we can approve something with edits, or we can deny. So now I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from November. Any questions or comments?
I move to approve the minutes.
All right. Is there a second?
I second them.
All right, thank you. The minutes are now approved. Okay, so there's going to be a little bit, if you look at your agenda, and I should have told you this today, if you look at Agenda Item Number Three, it says the election of officers for the Chair and the Vice Chair and the Secretary. And then if you look further down the page under Action Items, Item Number Two says reappointment of Commissioners Leckie and Ellingson. What we're going to do at this juncture is begin the reappointment of Commissioners Leckie and Ellingson, and then from there, move on to the election of officers. At this time, and I just have a clarification, Tanya, before we begin, I am only able to moderate, but I cannot second. I can't, can I, can I entertain the motion myself or second it? Because if we are, well, Chris is here, so I think we have it covered. Okay, so they'll have to just take care of that. Okay, I got that. The first thing we would like to do right now is reappoint Commissioner Leckie. Although she is not here this evening, she is ready and willing to continue with her two-year term. At this time, I will entertain a motion to reappoint Commissioner Sharon Leckie to an additional two-year term beginning in April 1st, 2022.
If I may, I believe they're four-year terms, but...
I'm sorry, it's a four-year term.
To make sure everyone knows what they're getting into.
Do you all know what you're getting into? I've been told to ask. All right. We need to entertain a motion to approve a reappointment for the four-year term of Commissioner Sharon Leckie that will begin in April of 2022.
I so move. Did that come through?
It did. Is there a second?
I second that.
All right, so moved. Here we go. Commissioner Sharon Leckie, congratulations on your next four-year term. So Chris, we'll need you to weigh in on this next one. I'd like to now open, entertain a motion to reappoint Commissioner Dan Ellingson for his next four-year term as the Representative of the Pioneer Association for the term beginning April 1, 2022.
I so move.
Is there a second?
I second that as well. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, and congratulations, Commissioner Ellingson. We're happy to have you. Thank you so much for your service.
I'm going to keep hanging on until I get to meet you all in person.
I can't wait. It's been a hard couple of years, you guys. Okay, moving on to the next part of Agenda Item Number Three is the election of officers. It says on the agenda that we're going for the Chair and the Vice Chair and the Secretary, but I do believe in you guys with the institutional knowledge perhaps can help me. I think a few years ago, we eliminated the Office of Secretary. Does anyone else remember that? Tanya does, she told me earlier.
Yeah, I remember that too.
Okay.
It was just Chair and Vice Chair, because we didn't really have any...
Okay.
...of what the Secretary did.
No, and it was, it was, it was Dennis. And yeah, anyway, we'll move on. So I looked this up in Robert's Rules of Orders a little bit today, but our new, our new, what are you called, an assistant?
Planning manager.
The Planning Manager for Deschutes County. Will Groves looked this up for me, and I do not have to recuse myself from a, an election of this. So what we would like to do now is talk about the election of the Chair and the Vice Chair. Currently, I am the Chair, and Sharon is the Vice Chair, and both of us are willing to continue our service if you guys are pleased with what we have done so far. I know that I was super nervous in the beginning, and tonight, I'm really trying to be like structured in Robert's Rules of Orders, but all I really want to do is talk about how nice Rachel's hair looks and how I like Dan's plaid shirt, but I don't really think I can do that. So we'll move on. I'll entertain a motion to elect Kelly Madden as the Chair for the Deschutes County Historic Landmarks Planning, Historic Landmarks Commission. So would anybody like to move forward with that?
I would happily second that motion.
Ah, do we need a first?
In that case, I'll make the motion.
Oh, yes.
So does that mean that we've elected me?
Yes.
Yay, thanks, you guys. It's exciting.
Kelly, one administrative point, I think making motion and seconding is just the first step. I think we're supposed to vote.
So should I say now? All of the, oh, I didn't do the ayes or the nays. Should we go back and do the other things over again? Perhaps we shall. All right, let's go back. Thank you so much, and I even wrote this down, but you know what? I didn't turn the page on my notes. Okay, here we go. Going back to the reappointment of Commissioner Sharon Leckie for her next four-year term beginning in April of 2022. All of those in favor, please say aye.
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 All right, so she is reappointed. Thank you. The next one is the reappointment of Commissioner Ellingson for his next four-year term beginning in April 2022. We have all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, he has been reappointed. Next one is the voting on the Chair of the Commission, which is Kelly Madden. All those in favor, say aye.
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 And finally, we're getting to the, entertain the motion, which I, did we already do the motion for Sharon? I don't, did we do that? I don't believe we did. So I will now entertain a motion to, I can do this. We will now entertain a motion to pick, to choose Sharon Leckie, Commissioner Leckie as the Vice Chair of the Deschutes County Historic Landmarks Commission.
I so move.
I second as well.
All right. Now, we will vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All right. Sharon Leckie, Commissioner Leckie is now the Vice Chair. Thank you for that, Commissioner Ellingson. I've never done any of this before. All right. Next item is the public comment. And Trevor, is there anybody that is online that is wanting to comment this evening?
I'm sorry, Kelly, backing up, don't we have to elect the officers?
We just did.
Did I miss something totally?
That's, isn't that what?
That's what we just finished.
Oh, I thought that was the reappointment.
No, the reappointment was first. We reappointed Sharon and Dan, and then after that, we did the election of officers.
Got it. I'm sorry, I'll go get a cup of coffee.
No, please, are you kidding? Bring me one. Okay. Trevor, are there any people that have signed in for public comment?
Nope, they just left.
Okay. There is nobody for the public comment, which is Agenda Item Number Four. So it looks like we're going to move on. Agenda Item Number Five. The first item is, I'm going to probably turn this over to Tanya at this point, and let me just look at my notes and turn the page one more time, make sure everything, aye and nay, eliminate the Secretary, okay. At this juncture, I would like to turn the meeting over to Tanya Salzman, Assistant Planner for Deschutes County.
All right, thanks, Chair Madden. Nice to see you all. For the record, Tanya Salzman, Senior Planner.
Senior Planner, I'm so sorry.
Assistant to the HLC. It's okay. We're all just people, really. Anyway, so I'm here, well, I'm going to talk everybody through kind of the rest of the meeting agenda. The first item is updates from Bend and Redmond HLCs. As the Commissioners are aware, this is something we just started up, I think it was last meeting, and I'm of the, of the philosophy that even a little update or no update is still nice to check in with them. So with that, I will say that Bend has nothing noteworthy to report. This is their exact words. They canceled their March meeting, but they are interested in the future of thinking about Preservation Month. They were asking me if the Deschutes County HLC has any kind of plans or anything like that. Bend, for Bend, it's been almost three years since they've done anything. They're going to try to do something this May, they're not really sure if they're going to be able to do that. So they were just kind of throwing out feelers. And that's something that we can talk about at the end of this meeting in terms of Preservation Month activities. Yeah, so that is a kind of fairly minimal update from the city of Bend, but helpful nevertheless. And then Redmond, pardon me, I just need to get my records up. Redmond, they are working on their work plan, their 22-23 work plan. They just applied for a CLG grant, which is what we are in the process of going through. They're kind of staggered, so they're applying for this cycle, which is about two years. We're in the middle of ours. So they're applying for a CLG grant. They hope to begin reserving the remaining 200 parcels around their downtown that were designated as undetermined, and they don't know why they were determined as undetermined. That was part of their RLS in 1997. So they're going to kind of go back over those records and see what's going on. The thing that I think is very interesting is the Redmond City Hall building, which I assume everyone's familiar with, but it's a fabulous building, that's listed on their register. It turns 100 years old this year. So they're looking to try to figure out some sort of event or something cool to do to commemorate that, because it's, you know, it's, it's a showpiece of kind of Redmond, that's where all the city offices are, and they did, I think they did a great restoration job personally. So they're going to be working on that. Hopefully, that will occur during Historic Preservation Month. And lastly, they are awaiting final approval from the NPS on a residential nomination to the National Register in town. They did not get any more specific than that, but, so they have some things in the fire, it sounds like, so that's, that's great.
And what is the gentleman's name who was the contact?
Harley Rucker.
Yeah, and he also contacted me, and so we did a little email thread as well, and he was, so that's a good inroad that we're doing.
Yeah, I think in the future, and as we discuss this later, if we want to ever have any kind of get-togethers with those other HLCs or group field trips together, you know, he's, he seems to be really up for it.
Right.
So he's an active Chair, so that's, that's great. So those are the updates. I'm going to just close this right now. Okay. The next Agenda Item is the adoption of the Final HLC Policies and Procedures Manual.
I don't know if I'm coming back on the line here, but I can, I don't know if you guys zoom in, or, I don't know where the camera is.
Yeah, we can see you.
You can see it?
I mean, zoomed out, but yeah.
It's beautiful.
It is. We have copies in our packet as well, and I wanted to say that this is really a great job. This document is, I think, really good.
Yeah, oh, there I am. Hello, Kelly. It just looks really good, and I'm really proud. We'll talk about it in just a second. Okay, Tanya, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, there's not a ton to say, except that, you know, as, as the Commission knows, there's, there were several rounds of edits. Many of you provided a lot of helpful edits, well, all of your edits were helpful, but it was just a, it was a great process, and I really appreciate all of the input that people had, whether it was about the photos, or proofreading, or actual kind of the National Register stuff that Chris was really helpful on. Obviously, some of that stuff, particularly the list of Goal Five resources, some of the things are a little funky in there, but we are ultimately tied to how it is adopted in our comprehensive plan. So there wasn't too much wiggle room that we could do. However, I will note that we are starting a new comprehensive plan update, so maybe we'll be able to reconcile those in the next year or two, so stay tuned for that. I had submitted, shared a document with everybody with a request for comments by January. We didn't get any additional edits, so therefore, I finalized the document, did, just fooled around with some formatting, added some photos, et cetera. And this is the final, as far as staff is concerned. Of course, we are open to if there's changes or mistakes or anything like that, but this is intended to be the final, final document presented to the Commissioners. So if the Commission would like, they can vote to approve this and adopt it, and that becomes part of kind of the arsenal of documents that the HLC has. We will put it on the website, we will kind of distribute it far and wide to anyone who wants it, and we'll kind of, I think we'll probably provide an update to the Board of County Commissioners and show them the great work that the Commission has been doing and all of that good stuff, so. But again, if, if there are still any changes, I'm certainly open to...
Do I need to do the vote this evening, right now?
If the Commission would like, I think that would be a logical step.
Okay. I, I just want to say that before we do a motion and a vote, that I remember Peter, when we started this process, he had said that it was, well, it's not a very sexy thing to do, and it's like, well, you know, I don't think we're all on this Commission for that reason, so. But I just, you know, with things that are happening, and the water in the West, and the way Bend is growing, and the way the county is growing, I just feel really proud of us for all putting together and like coming up. You know, we've been on this Commission for a long time, and I feel like this, we finally, like Rachel, we got the basement built underneath the house, you know? It's just really nice, and I'm just really proud of everybody, and I think it's a good thing. I don't know if other Commissions even have anything like this, but I think it's helpful. So what I would like to do right now is entertain a motion to adopt the Historic Landmarks Commission Policies and Procedure Manual.
I so move.
I'll second it.
Thank you. We'd like to vote, all those in favor of adopting the Historical Landmarks Commission Policies and Procedure Manual, please say aye.
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 Aye. All right. It is adopted, and the picture on the cover is just lovely. I remember that field trip when we went to see those cabins, it's great. Okay, thank you, Tanya, for all of your hard work on that, it's really, really appreciated.
No, I think it'll be a great thing to just have at the ready, and also just as the Commission thinks in the future about kind of recruiting additional Commissioners, if that's an option, you know, this is a good thing to kind of show to people and say, this is, this is what the HLC does, you know, this is, this is the, the universe of the HLC. So I think it's nice to have that kind of finalized and formalized, so, yeah.
Yeah, and having it readily accessible on, on the Internet, I think, is also going to be helpful, so that anyone who has any interest, I mean, it's a very easy document to get through, so, yeah, I do hope it earns some interest from the public.
Yeah, I will put it up this week, so.
We heard that chuckle, huh? Because you don't have anything else to do, right, Tanya?
It's a pleasant task to do. All right, I guess it's me again. So now, this is kind of the, the most exciting Agenda Item, in my opinion. It's the Kickoff Strategic Plan. This is in the same vein as the manual, it's kind of a foundational document to the HLC, kind of about what it is, who they are, what, what the goals are. And this is also part of our CLG grant. This is kind of the other in-house task that we are accomplishing by August. The other tasks, as you might be aware, are with the City of Sisters. They're going to be working on a story map and doing some printed materials, and that's, those are things that are kind of going to be directly reimbursed by the grant. This is kind of the in-kind staff internal side of things. So I gave a couple of attachments in the packet of the existing plan, which was the 2015 to 2020 plan, as well as a proposed timeline, and I gave an overview of kind of the process and things that we're looking to do in the packet, and if you don't mind, I'm going to talk about those with a PowerPoint. So it's fairly simple, and fairly short, but I'm going to just share my screen if you bear with me for a minute. First, I'm on the last, the last slide. Let's start with the first slide.
Let's go backwards.
It's been a long day. Can everybody see that? We can't go into presentation mode for some mysterious reason, so I'm going to just do that. All right, so this is the overview and the kickoff, and please feel free to chime in at any moment with any questions or thoughts or anything like that. So first, I'm going to just do a brief overview of the project, go over a timeline, which admittedly is a fairly compressed one, but I believe we can do it. I want to talk about potential survey questions, and then the potential interviewees, and I'll get into details about this in the, in a moment, and then talk about next steps. So the Strategic Plan, as I noted, the most recent one was adopted in 2015. I'm curious, how, how many of you were part of that process here? Rachel, you were.
I think we all were, except for Dan.
Yeah. We're all familiar with it.
Okay, so you know, you know what we're talking about already.
Yes.
But I will still go over it. This is the cover of it. The Strategic Plan, which is difficult to say, it allows the HLC to connect with the communities it serves. It's kind of the, the, almost the charter document that kind of identifies and prioritizes preservation programs, talks to, it's meant to communicate with property owners, with stakeholders, with municipalities, nonprofits, just interested individuals. It's just meant to show what the HLC is all about. It also helps to inform future CLG grants. And in this case, the CLG grant is paying for making the Strategic Plan, so it's also a bit of a circular situation, but as you know, the CLG grants, sometimes it's not the easiest to come up with, with projects, and I think this helps kind of give a, an outline to potential projects and helps get the Commissioners thinking and the public thinking about things they might want to pursue. Part of the, the Strategic Plan, in addition to lots of kind of background information, some of which is, also appears in the manual, is goals, objectives, and actions. These are kind of, this is the meat and potatoes of the plan, and I just have a little screenshot here of an example from 2015. One of the big goals was collaborate. The subsequent objective, there were several of them. In this case, this was to improve the facilitation of historic preservation in the region, to increase the visibility of and participation in historic preservation efforts throughout the county. And the actions, which are actual specific actionable items, in this case, establish the Deschutes Historical Society as the hub of preservation programs, and to support and engage in Preservation Month activities. So it goes from, you know, large to small in terms of goals, objectives, and actions. And unless, I don't see any reason to deviate from that, that kind of structure unless people believe strongly in that, but I think that's pretty effective. And it's, it's very possible that a lot of the, what emerges from this process will be very similar to what exists already, but I think what's interesting about this is the process, is going through these conversations, going through these interviews, even if the, the final document might not be super, super different from the existing or the previous one. It's a good exercise, I think. So the process this time around, it's focused a lot on outreach. We're going to do individual stakeholder interviews, and I have more on that later, but that'll be largely conducted by staff, me, and then we'll also have a couple of virtual open houses. Those will be coming up fairly soon, and we'll also have an online survey. And all of these things are designed to figure out what people's priorities are, what their goals are, what do they want to do with historic preservation, what are we not doing that we should be doing, all of that. And I think the open houses, and we can talk more about this later, the open houses will be kind of a live version of the, the things we ask in the survey and more. You know, it gives people a chance to, to, to join and, and just speak informally about what they, what they feel about historic preservation, as well as speak to the, the specific questions that we'll ask in the survey. Then staff, once that is all complete, staff will summarize these, these efforts for the HLC, hopefully group them into some sort of organizing principles, you know? 10% of the people said this, 80% hated this, et cetera, et cetera, so we want to get that kind of organized. And that'll allow the HLC to, to refine and create those goals, objectives, and actions that I just mentioned, based on that input, as well as input from the Commissioners themselves. I don't know if I listed the actual Commissioners, but I want to hear, staff wants to hear from each one of you, of course, as part of this process, to see what, you know, I want to know the same exact things from, from you all as from the Deschutes Historical Society, so you are also your stakeholders, as well as committee members, Commission members. So after those goals, objectives, and actions are refined and created, I will draft, staff will draft a plan document, draft document, and review that with the HLC. And then depending on how that goes, you know, there might be subsequent versions, and ultimately, we will adopt a final one, a final strategic plan and present that to the Board of County Commissioners. That's talking about this really fast, all at once, but that is an overview of, of the process. Does anyone have any questions thus far, or comments?
It just seems really odd to me that we already, it's like, we just did this last week, and it's like, oh, no, it's time to do it again, and I'm sure that the timeline's pretty tight.
It is, but I think it's, it's doable. I mean, I think, yeah, I absolutely think it's doable. I think the hardest part is going to be, and I'll go into that on the timeline, but the hardest part will be kind of staff scheduling the individual interviews and things like that.
Right.
But that's kind of not, not your problem, really. I'll take care of it on the staff side, and we'll, we'll address it, and we'll get people, because they're individual interviews, that actually, we can be pretty nimble about scheduling.
And I, I can help.
Thank you. Yeah, yeah, I think, you know, in collecting that, that information, I think it's a little bit of a lift, certainly, but I think it's 100% doable, and I think where this differs from the, the manual that we just finished is this is taking people's kind of opinions and directions, and not just saying, this is what we do as dictated in state law, et cetera, et cetera. This is kind of what, it's aspirational, and that's what makes it interesting to me. So this is the timeline. I'm not sure how well you can see this, it copied a little bit blurry, but you also received it in your packet. This is an overview of the timeline, I'll just briefly go over it. So we are in March, we're kicking it off. Those little stars mean HLC meetings. Staff, after today, basically, will work on scheduling, if this is okay with the Commission, will work on scheduling those interviews. We're going to have a press release to announce everything that's happening, we'll update the website, and get the survey established online. Hopefully, in April, we will be able to do two virtual public meetings, and these, we can talk about this a little bit more, but I would imagine they'd probably be two different evenings roughly around this time, probably no longer than an hour, and essentially fairly informal, and this would be a situation where some, but not all of the HLC Commissioners can attend and help facilitate, it's kind of up to you. It's always nice to have at least one person.
When are these?
We'll set them sometime in April, and we have, those are TBDs still, and I realize that's very soon. But we will, I will work with an administration here to see kind of what the room availability is and that kind of thing. I might imagine it will be a combination of virtual and with the potential for in-person, depending on how people feel on that, about that. We've done similar things with other projects with the Planning Commission. It's kind of... It's kind of a couple of people from the commission pop in and they help kind of field questions or provide conversation topics, and we do it all, it's, those were all virtual, and those were really successful. And it's broadcast the same way these meetings are. And they can be a really good way to receive public input and just have those conversations. So those will take place in April. As noted, staff will circle back in May. Our regular meeting is scheduled for the first Monday of May. I'll provide a summary of kind of all of that input received from the open houses, from the interviews, from the online surveys, which will be open for basically that whole month. There's some really great tools out there that help you kind of compile that survey information electronically. And based on that, we'll draft the plan and the goals, objectives, and actions. Staff will discuss that with the HLC at the May meeting. And that will give staff, my marching orders essentially, to create this draft, and that will take place over May and June. Then, we anticipate having an extra special bonus meeting with the HLC in July. And hopefully, you know, we'll try to get these scheduled out as far in advance as possible. I recognize this, people are busy, it's the summer, et cetera. But that's when staff will present the draft to the HLC. That will be discussed then, and then hopefully in the regularly scheduled meeting in August, we would prepare for potential adoption. And this is to say, if for some reason this timing doesn't work and there's a ton of changes, that is absolutely fine. We want to have the best document possible. We can work with it. So we're prepared to be flexible, and we can always deal with the grant timeline constrictions, you know, staff can deal with that and we can work on that. But I think that this is a doable timeline, and the document itself is not actually a terribly long document, so it's more a matter of just corralling that public input we receive and making some goals out of it. Any questions or thoughts on the timeline?
No, I just am wondering, you had mentioned April meeting. Did you say that there were, this is Commissioner Madden, two evening meetings that there's going to be in April?
We can discuss that, and it's not required. That's the thing.
Right, and they could be hybrid, like in-person and Zoom?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so they would be similar in format to this, but perhaps a little bit more formalized.
Right. But you had said two?
Yes.
Okay.
I think two is the best. I mean, if, you know, these days with virtual meetings, sometimes you can do fewer meetings because you don't have to worry about that geographic aspect and people traveling. I think it's always nice to offer two, just because people are busy.
Okay.
That's just my opinion. And we can discuss a little later if, you know, we want to stagger them, we want to have them just two nights in a row to get it kind of done. There's lots of options.
Right.
And not, and again, attendance from all commissioners is certainly not required, just encouraged.
Well, I do remember when we did this first strategic plan, and we had these goals and these ideas and these things that we wanted to do, and that's what we're doing. And so, you know, we haven't done a lot in a couple of years, and now it's time to like, you know, buck up and we'll just be working in April and May and July and August, and then we'll have some fun maybe in the fall. Or if we're going to, yeah, we'll talk about that in a minute. It looks great for me. I think it's a very important document. Any thoughts from anyone else?
I'd like to make this comment, Tanya. April and May are probably the two busiest months for farmers, but whatever time I can squeeze out, I'd be more than happy to help.
Wonderful. No, that's really good feedback.
And also, I'll be gone the second half of April, because we're taking a long vacation to Baja, to the Sea of Cortez.
Open houses from Baja.
I suppose I could take my computer.
No, 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 we would not ask you to do that. No, that's helpful as well.
If you had the April meetings earlier in April, I would be glad to help.
Thank you. Just writing this down. And yeah, I don't think, and I'll touch on this a little bit more later, but I don't think we will necessarily be able to pin down an exact date tonight, because I'll have to check with administration in terms of rooms and stuff like that, but I hope to get it pinned down, you know.
Sure, you just let us know.
ASAP, for sure.
And the other question I have is, when I look at this timeline and I see the August, it says that we're adopting the Historic Preservation Strategic Plan. Is that just a motion and a vote, or is that going to be more than that? Because if we do decide to do something else for that meeting, can we group it together?
Oh, yes, of course.
Okay.
The same way today, you know, one agenda.
Right.
We're adopting the management.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
If there's further changes to kind of go through, we can do that as well, too.
Right.
Yeah, it's just one part of the meeting, for sure.
Okay.
Tanya, I have one question, I guess. Is August, is that like the deadline for the strategic plan, or is that just when it's been suggested?
Well, the deadline for the CLG grant is the end of August.
Okay, that's what I thought.
So that's kind of what compressed this a little bit. I think honestly, if we make really good progress and we're not quite there, I think we can probably work with that. I would like to have this as a goal, though. But I do think, yeah, we're supposed to finish our reporting by the end of August to the state. But I think, again, especially because this is not a specifically reimbursable part of the grant, it's kind of staff in-kind time. I think it has potential to be a little bit more, I don't want to say loose, but you know, a little flexible, shall we say. But I would like to have this as a goal and then have the plan be as if we need to extend that timeline.
Are there any other questions or concerns? Thank you, Rachel. That was a good one.
All right, I'll just continue on. So now I'm going to just briefly, well, maybe not so briefly, but talk about the survey questions. So these will be online. We'll probably use a tool such as Survey Monkey, that type of thing. We've done that in the past. And this will also form the basis of kind of the conversations that we have with our individual interviewees and the open houses. So these were the questions that you asked last time around. I just have kind of reproduced these verbatim. I think they're really good, frankly, but I just wanted to go through each one to see what the commissioners think and if they want to change things or not. So I'm just going to go through each one. I think there's about seven of them, and I would love to hear your thoughts if you just think they're great or you would like to modify them, you know, that it's all great. So with that, question one is, which of the following categories best describes your role in historic preservation? Architect, government official or staff, interested citizen, owner of historic property, preservation or archaeology professional, preservation volunteer, or other? And in all of these surveys where it says other, there will be space to actually type in what that other is. I just didn't do that here.
I have a question about that. I'm just thinking about my teacher brain and thinking that you might want to put like interested citizen, owner of historic property as the first and second thing, and then maybe from there go to architect or government official, because I think if a lot of people just see the word architect, they may not read on or move on, but if they see interested citizen first, then that might be a better, I don't know. It's just a thought.
That's a good point, Kelly. One thing I might also add about the term architect is not, there's a lot of unlicensed design professionals and engineers, for that matter, in central Oregon, so I think you probably want to have a bit of a broader option for that. I mean, architect could fall into that role, but it's a very specific licensure, so I think if you said something like design professional or engineer or architect, something like that, then you're covering a lot of bases.
Yeah, you could put design professional slash engineer slash architect, right?
Right.
That's a great suggestion. Yeah. Okay, I will do that. And I will move that down. I think, yeah, putting interested citizen as number one probably is a great idea.
That's just someone who made a lot of multiple choice tests, wrote a lot of those in their life.
And then owner of historic property, so bump those up to the top, change architect to architect slash engineer slash design professional. Yeah, those are great.
I also wanted to suggest that they're interested citizens, which I'm going to discuss when you talk about who you plan to interview. But I don't know if it would be part of this group or a separate group, but I'm thinking if you had a focus on people who have lived here forever.
Oh, pioneer association.
Yep, that's what I was thinking.
Kind of people, like you.
Yeah, do you think that should be, so as you're proposing that as a separate choice?
Well, I wasn't sure if just to designate it as a slash interested citizen or pioneer or make it a separate category, I'm not sure myself.
Should we just put like old timers in the county? No, sorry, I'm just teasing.
Multi-generational.
Oh.
Yes.
County resident? No, multi...
Something like that.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
Yeah, it does.
I'm sorry, could someone repeat the phrase that they want? I just missed that.
What did you say, Rachel? Multi-generational?
I'm trying to think of the...
What do they call those 100-year farms? Do they have a term for that?
Century farms.
Century farms? I don't know. Multi-generational county dwellers? I know that doesn't sound quite right.
Resident, yeah. That's the only thing that's coming to mind.
Multi-generational county resident?
Yeah, something like that, I think would be good.
There must be a word for that.
Well, I will write down multi-generational county resident, and if anything...
We come up with something better.
Something better.
That's a good question, but something to that effect, and if, yeah.
Foggy, I don't know.
Recently, I used the term natives to Bend and wasn't thinking it through, because to my surprise, there was a 12-year-old who said, yeah, I was born and raised here.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. No, I like the multi-generational aspect in that.
I mean, at least it tells you, you've got, you know, more than a few years of living here to qualify. You know, if you're looking at multi-generations, it's what, 30-plus, 20, 30-plus years?
The requirement for the Pioneer Association is 40 years.
Forty, yeah.
All right, well, let's table that one for right now. Let's go with them.
He didn't know it would get so much interest.
This is what I'm going to think about at 3:00 in the morning when I'm awake, this term. But if anybody, if anyone has any additional thoughts, feel free to email me in the next couple of days. But right now, I'll just write down multi-generational county resident. And we'll see where that goes. I think, you know, the intent will be communicated, I think, even if it's not the snazziest, right? Okay, any other thoughts on this question?
And this might be one where people are able to check more than one box, or several.
So you could put in the question, check as many as apply or something?
Right. Yeah, that's a good point. Okay, let's go to question number two. This is a pretty simple one. Which best represents the community where you live? Bend, Lapine, Redmond, Sisters, rural Deschutes County, or other? Any thoughts on that?
Well, I'm just wondering, when you leave Bend and you're in Tumalo, should we have Tumalo in here? Or is Tumalo just, since it's not incorporated, it's not a real place? Or is the rest of Deschutes County all rural? You know, that's what I just wonder. But I guess people will figure it out.
Well, if you include Tumalo, you should include Terrabon, too, then.
True. You could say South County, North County, a lot of people talk that.
Mm-hmm.
I heard tell. And they call it Sisters...
The significance is, what information are we trying to get from this question?
Good point, Commissioner Ellingson. We're just trying to do demographics?
Yeah, I think, and it's not going to be, of course, it's non-scientific, it's not going to be statistically significant, but you know, if 99% of the survey respondents say, hey, I live in Bend, then, you know, we consider those suggestions a little bit different than if most of them are from the rural county. I think the rural county is what we're really trying to kind of grasp the most, right?
Right. You could put after rural Deschutes County, you could put in parentheses, any place outside these towns or something.
Right, like a descriptor.
Right.
And maybe what about putting rural Deschutes County first?
Right.
Okay. All right, so I'll say rural Deschutes County, that will be number one, and I'll have a little descriptor in parentheses. And then the other will capture, I think, the Terrabons, the Tumalos, et cetera. How does that sound? Good? Okay. Great. All right, so now on to number three. Rank the top five historic preservation goals you feel should be addressed in this five-year, in the five-year Historic Preservation Strategic Plan. And they'll be able to click on five of them.
Okay.
Promoting heritage tourism, historic preservation training and workshops, funding programs such as heritage grants, CLG grants, making the inventory of historic properties more easily accessible to the public, strengthening the network of preservation partners, increasing public awareness of the benefits of historic properties, and other. This is a biggie, I recognize. It's tricky, but I think, well, I'd like to hear what everybody else has to say.
Well, this is Commissioner Madden, and I have a question. I think that most, as Commissioner Ellingson said, we don't know who these interested citizens are going to be that get this, but I know that most people do not know what a certified local government grant is, and even people that are on the commission, sometimes I didn't, it took me like years. We've been doing this 10 years, it took me a long time to figure it out. So, and people may not know what a heritage grant is either, so you might just make that an umbrella term and have something like, you know, funding programs, grants or whatever that help preservation or something, because I don't think, unless you guys think that someone's going to know what that is, I don't think no anyone will.
I agree with that. Tanya, could you flip to the next slide, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I'm looking at a paper copy as well. My bad.
And this was the one that they can also number them one through five?
You know, I'll have to check on that, to be honest, on the technology. They'll either be able to check.
That's what the document you sent out was like then.
Yeah, yeah, I don't, I think that that will be allowable. Yeah, they'll be able to prioritize those five. Yeah, I like the suggestion of making the grant language a little more generic.
Mm-hmm.
You know, grants to help preservation projects.
Right.
Grants to help cities do, yeah, I can work on that language.
We're working hard tonight, Tanya. You're whipping us.
Putting you all to work. I appreciate it. I'm just taking some notes here. And what do you all think about those choices? Do they kind of cover it as far as, as close as one can, or are we missing anything?
Promoting tourism.
I mean, I suppose if we're missing something, someone would type that into the other.
Right.
Yeah, I think the other category is going to be the catch-all for anything different than that.
Yeah. So I will change the grant language, and I will double-check that our technology will allow us to prioritize five and not just check five. Great, all right, moving on. Number four, and I will advance this. Rate the importance of each of the following issues or challenges historic preservation is facing in rural Deschutes County and the City of Sisters. And there'll be five choices ranging from not important to very important. Lack of local support for historic preservation, a need for historic preservation education or training, lack of visibility in the community, property redevelopment, lack of communication or partnership between preservation organizations, and other.
Should another category be apathy? No.
Oh, nobody cares about that. The reason I ask about the ranking on the previous question, because the note I put down here for myself is, both this question and the next question, when I read them, I wouldn't know what to do. Five choices ranging from not important. So I was wondering if those could not also be the same, rank them one through five?
Yeah, I think we could do that as well. The way it was presented in the original one, and I didn't really recreate it for the PowerPoint, because I couldn't, it basically had next to each one of these options, you know, five different little checkboxes, so not important, moderately important, you know, kind of a scale, essentially.
Right, and that description works perfectly. Now I understand.
I have a question on that. The wording on what to do on number four is a little awkward, and so I'm wondering if you could start it by saying, rural Deschutes County and the City of Sisters faces issues and challenges to historic preservation. Rank the top five issues, whatever. It just seems a little awkward, that question. I don't know how you would redo it, but you might say, it's almost like if you flipped it around and gave, had the little, this is the intro, and then this is what we want you to do. I don't know, it just seemed a little, I didn't really know what to do. I need to rate them, and it's the same thing, and there's five choices ranging from not important to very important. So is that... So is that that same bar that you would-
Yeah, that would be, like I said-
Okay.
But I think that makes sense. You know, you state the problem first, and then say-
What should we do? Right. Otherwise, you're, it feels like you're speaking a foreign language and you've switched the stuff around.
Yeah, so I can do that, flip that-
Does that make sense?
Rural Deschutes County and the city of Sisters face issues and challenges, something like-
Yeah, like all counties and cities in the-
Historic preservation in rural Deschutes County and the city of Sisters have some challenges. Rate them.
Yes, rate them, challenges. Very simple, yeah. You guys have anything else on number four?
I'm trying to fit something in there about, maybe it's the first question, the lack of local support or understanding of how historic preservation works.
Ignorance of the topic. Right?
Yeah, without saying-
Without saying that.
Yeah.
And yet, keeping that separate from the second one, which is a need for historic preservation education.
Education, yeah, I guess it falls into that too. They kind of overlap.
I mean, to me, education or training strikes me as more kind of like-
That seems after the ignorance.
Yeah, without knowing that it's an issue in the first place.
Or awareness, I guess, might be an appropriate term.
Maybe lack of awareness of historic preservation issues?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm sure that a lot of people don't even know that historic preservation exists. I don't know.
In which case, they might not be able to answer this question.
The thing that I come across pretty frequently just in the design and construction industry is it's this misconception of limitations surrounding historic properties, of what you can do with them.
Like, "They'll only let me make this window," and I can't tell them or they're going to make me redo the sashes or whatever. And I don't really think it's like that. Is that what you mean, Rachel? Or Commissioner Stimmich?
Yep.
Yep.
So maybe, speaking to that, you know, there's this one, property redevelopment. Maybe we elaborate on that a little bit, make it a little more, I don't know, ambiguity in property redevelopment process or-
Or trepidation. Maybe that's too sperm of a word.
Thinking of-
Misconceptions about property redevelopment limitations or-
Ooh.
I don't know.
Misconceptions about property redevelopment limitations. It sounds like a poem.
I think that makes sense. That's good.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, that does. Misconceptions about property redevelopment limitations. And then we'll also add, lack of awareness of historic preservation issues.
Yes.
Exactly.
Okay. Great. Okay. This is super helpful. I really appreciate this.
And look, we're almost done.
We are very close. It's true. Oh, and I'm going to advance number five. Okay, number five. What issues should be the top priorities for the county and the city of Sisters Historic Preservation Community, including both private and public preservation organizations over the next five years? Please check all that apply. Uh, sorry. Continue surveying and documenting historic properties. Increase public awareness of the benefits of historic properties. Increase access to historic property information. Protect, it should be protect archaeological sites or other. This one's a little-
I have two questions. This is Commissioner Madden, two things. I don't understand why you had to put, including both private and public preservation organizations over the next five years. Wouldn't you just be able to say what issues should be the top priorities for the county and city of Sisters Historic Preservation Community?
I agree.
Okay. I don't really know what private and public preservation organizations are.
Yeah. Do we even have private preservation organizations? I mean, it's not like a nonprofit or something. I mean, not necessarily-
You mean like stuff that Deschutes Land Trust would do, things like that, but historical?
If it's a nonprofit, but it's not necessarily government-funded.
Right.
Yeah.
And then the other thing, I'm wondering if there should be something about education. Increase public awareness and education or something. Because I don't know if that needs to be on there.
Right.
You know, public awareness would be like Historic Preservation Month. But it's not increasing the public awareness of just the benefit of a historic property, but isn't it just-
Of historic preservation.
Of historic preservation.
The benefits sound like it's a toothbrush or something.
Right.
So maybe that one would change to increase public awareness of historic preservation?
Yes. And then you could also have, I don't know, if you need to add education in there. Do you guys think we should add education in there?
I think awareness covers it.
Yes, I think so too.
Yeah, I do too.
Good job.
All right, so increase public awareness of historic preservation. Any-
Well, it's like the one that says, "Increase access to historic property information," that's all there already, isn't it? Or do you mean ease of access? Because all that stuff's on the computer somewhere.
But if people, I think, if people say overwhelmingly, "I don't have this information," that'll tell us, you know?
Oh.
Our website or-
Because they're lazy.
So maybe that's just sort of a tell.
Yeah, right, okay.
Any other thoughts on this one? And we'll delete, including both private and public preservation organizations.
Good idea.
I'm not quite sure why that was in there, but that was the vestige of the last-
The old one, right?
All right, number six. Select the top five most effective methods that Deschutes County and the city of Sisters can use for providing historic preservation information to the public. Exhibits, lectures and presentations, newspaper articles, publications such as brochures, training workshops, tours, website, and other.
That one looks pretty thorough to me. I'm trying to think of what we've missed.
Under the newspaper articles, since newspapers aren't all that prevalent these days, could we include newsletters, email newsletters?
Digital newspaper, digital newspaper articles, right?
Yeah.
Newspaper or email newsletter articles.
Yeah, and also, well, I guess there's not really magazines. I'm thinking mass media, but yeah, newspaper and newsletter, you said?
Yeah, email newsletters.
Right. But, you know-
Digital articles.
Restore Oregon has an email one. Shippo does an email blast.
Right.
Every month. But they still use listservs. So I guess it'd be under website.
Yeah, newspaper articles and-
It's funny, this is probably written in 2015, right? And in 2015, we were still using, reading the newspaper.
So email newsletters or just newsletters?
Well, email newsletters.
Okay, so newspaper articles and email newsletters is one item. Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think website.
Website is. Or internet, or digital, or-
Why don't you put social media sites?
Yes, I was just going to say that.
With websites, a website slash social media, or keep them separate? Together, okay. Twitter.
A voice from the heavens.
All right, so now we have exhibits, lectures and presentations, newspaper articles and email newsletters, publications, brochures, et cetera, training workshops, tours, websites slash social media, and other. I think that covers it.
Yep.
And if it doesn't, we have other. Great, wonderful. Okay, last two questions. These are open-ended. And I think this will be where we'll get the most interesting stuff coming into the surveys. So why is the preservation of Deschutes County and the city of Sisters heritage important to you? I think those will just be nice, it'll just be great to hear what people say. And I think those can take a prominent role in kind of the strategic plan and just literally just putting that out there as to show public interest and public thoughts.
Any comments on that one, people?
Could you advance the slide, please?
Oh, sorry. Thanks, Trevor.
Tonya, is there a, I can't remember, was there a description or introduction part that talked about why Deschutes County and city of Sisters are separated?
I will be putting that in the survey, yeah. I think it'll be, or that it's actually together under one.
Together, yeah.
Yeah, well, I'll explain that, what the kind of purview of the HLC is and show. Kind of similar to, maybe we can put up that map that we have in the manual that kind of shows the little geographic, yeah, I think that's a very good point.
That might help.
Because a lot of people are confused because Redmond has one, and Bend has one, and then we're with Sisters.
Yeah.
Those out-county people.
So any thoughts on that question or leave as is?
It's good.
Should the board heritage, if we're talking about the city of Sisters and the heritage belongs to them, is that a capital H? Or is that just me being weird and tired? It's not. Because it's not a proper noun. Okay, all right, all right.
But I appreciate you asking. Okay, number eight, please include any other comments, concerns, or recommendations related to historic preservation in rural Deschutes County and the city of Sisters. That's kind of a easy one.
Rachel.
Are you going to say at the bottom of here, "Thank you" or something?
Oh, I can?
It might be nice for the last question to say, "Thank you for taking this survey."
Maybe if I can figure it out, I'll bounce, you know, put a link back to the HLC page or something like that.
That sounds great.
Yep.
Then it shows that it exists.
Exactly, exactly. Wonderful, okay. So that's the survey. Thank you so much. This is extremely helpful. I will get on that, and I will post it as soon as I can and share with the commissioners when that is up. And I'll include some background information on when it closes, and some of that will be contingent upon when we close open houses, so hopefully in the next-
I had a couple of comments on who you intend to interview.
Oh, yes, yes, that's the next question, I mean, the next slide.
Tonya, before you proceed with that, how is this going to be broadcast again?
Well, we're going to do, we work through our county communications people. So they do a social media blast usually, they put it on the county website, we'll put it on our community development website. They do a traditional press release that the newspaper may or may not pick up, depending on what else is going on, frankly. But we, yeah, they have a whole team that kind of does all that. So we can blast things out to as many people as possible. All right, so interviewees, and this is a list that came from Peter Gatauski. And I welcome any input on yays or nays, or, oh, my gosh, let's not talk to that person, let's talk to this other person. A lot of these people, I don't actually know them, so this is kind of new to me. I'm relying on your expertise. Should I just go down the list or?
My first suggestion is the old St. Francis History Pub.
Yes.
That's really not a thing, that's more of a place. The actual people who do the presentations are typically from the Historical Society. So I wouldn't include them on there. I also have some questions about the consultants. They're a little bit biased, that's my opinion, but then, I'm a little bit biased. And also, Kelly definitely is a good source of information. But there are also people on the Board of Directors for the Historical Society that have decades of information about living here and what's happened in the past. And some of them have had amazing roles, like being the county surveyor, for example, and access to maps and things you can't find anyplace else.
And they're on the board, you say, of the Historical Society?
Yes, some of them are, uh-huh.
And tagging on to that, I don't know who the county surveyor is right now. I'm trying to think of the one that taught me about tree blazes and all that. But that might be somebody too, because they're awfully involved in history things. And then there's another one I wanted to add. I don't know if you know. There's a group called the Central Oregon Geoscience Group. And it's led by Dr. Danielle McKay, who is a geologist at OSU Cascades, and a friend of mine named Derek Loeb from the Land Trust. And they do very similar things to the Archaeology Society, except it's, you know, geology. But they're always really into, they do presentations and do stuff, and they're into history as well.
Great. Yeah, I think the more the barrier, frankly, and I think, and if, given the time, you know, it's possible that not everybody is going to be able to participate. So I think casting a wide net is helpful.
And I would also like to double up with what Dan said about the consultants. I just don't know if they would give us an objective answer.
That's fair, that's fair. So do you think we should just not, just eliminate that line completely and-
I personally do. What do you guys think?
Which consultants?
Well, you see this, the fifth one down, Pat and Michael.
Sorry, okay. That one blended in. I mean, yeah, that's a tricky one.
It is tricky.
I mean, I will-
I was just going to suggest there, I mean, just because our commission has basically done, you know, close to 10 years' worth of preservation months. There's, we've worked with a number of folks in, you know, these different organizations. And I'm thinking the ones that retired, you know, within the last, you know, four or five years. I'm wondering if someone like that would be interested. Maybe not necessarily that they're active in their field anymore, but just their background. There was one person from BLM that I know retired a number of years ago. The county surveyor, Mike Berry.
That's who I was thinking of.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You'll knock your ear off.
That's also the person I met when I said on the Board of Directors of the Historical Society.
Oh.
Yeah, he is a character. That would be a very interesting interview.
And then there's that other man named Mr. Ward. What does Ward, oh, I can't think of that man's name.
Tonsfeldt.
Yes. Tonsfeldt, he was related to Obi Riley. Is that who I'm thinking of? He's a, he does historic reviews of things.
Yep.
Yep. Did you get that name? Ward?
Ward.
W-A-R-D, Tonsfeldt. I don't even know if he still lives here. T-O-N-S-F-E-L-T. And he was a, I don't even know what his job was. He wasn't a, he did archaeological surveys for the Forest Service that were historical. And he was also a, he's also a multi-generational, what do we call those people? A multi-generational county resident.
Does anyone happen to have contact information for Ward? Or would be able to-
He would be on, he would be, if you just put his name in there, he'd show up as consulting, probably.
Okay, this is great.
And at the Deschutes County Historical Society, there's also Vanessa Ivy, who knows a lot.
Vanessa Ivy, okay. And some of these, you know, I might end up doing, depending on logistics, a couple people at a time from the Historical Society to get kind of more of a conversation. You know, it's not going to be super duper duper in-depth. You know, it is for the purposes of kind of classifying, helping prioritize the goals, much like the survey. I would love to do kind of a longer kind of oral history extravaganza. But this could also open some doors for future projects. So I think, you know, just keeping those parameters in mind, that they're not going to be, you know, they'll probably be an hour each, I would think.
And on the next page, we have Sisters County Historical Society. The contact person is a woman named Jan Hodgers.
Yes. I have her info. She presented to this-
Right, right.
Yeah, okay, this is-
Tonya?
Great, yes.
The BLM Sisters Ranger District and Fort Rock Ranger District contact people have all moved on.
Okay, Matthew?
I have updated lists if you want them.
That would be fantastic. You could email those to me? That would be wonderful.
Yeah, I can do that tomorrow.
Thank you. See, this is why we do this. You guys know all the people, so it's great.
And if you're looking for a contact with the city of Lapine, I mean, you could start with probably one of the planners, but in, just in previous Preservation Month activities, you'd try to get whoever the head of the Tourism Department for Lapine- activities, you'd try to get the, whoever the head of the tourism department for Lapine, they've been helpful in the past, but that doesn't, yeah, I mean, people are changing jobs all the time, so that would be a good place to start from, for that location.
Wonderful, thank you. Any other thoughts? So we're going to get rid of the consultants, and we're going to get rid of the pub, because it's usually people from the Historical Society, and add a bunch of people who you all mentioned. If anyone comes up with any other ideas, this is kind of going to be a rolling set of interviews, so it doesn't need to be finalized today, I think, please send them along, that would be super.
Deschutes Public Library might have some good contacts as well.
Because they've always, they always participate in some of those things.
Exactly.
And then there's that sweet woman, that girl, what was her name, Margaret?
Well, I'll think of her.
Oh.
Maffei.
Margaret Maffei, right, from the Redmond Parks and Recs, she's a doll.
Ruffei?
Maffei, M-A-F-F-A-I, Margaret, and she used to, before the pandemic began, kind of head up and do a lot with Historic Preservation Month, and she works for Redmond Parks and Recs.
This is a great list. I got my work cut out for me. I'm excited. All right. This is not, this is a wonderful starting point, if you think of more things, by all means, please let me know, or if you happen to come across contact information, most of these people I can find, but any, any info would be much appreciated, and I will kind of report back on who I talk to and, and what happens.
Tonya, when I saw the Old St. Francis History Pub, I thought we were going to have to go in and like, interview the curtains, interview the couch.
Whatever floats your boat?
I know.
Yeah, okay, wonderful. Thank you, everyone.
You're certainly welcome.
Last slide here, so, next steps. We're going to get the word out, this is kind of all on staff, the media releases that I spoke about, website, social media, we will also, I'll pin down those interviewees. As far as virtual open house dates, I'm going to have to get back to you all on those, but they will be in April. Any thoughts about, I mean, I assume we want to do kind of evening around 5:30-ish times, because that's best for people rather than during the workday? Let me know if that's a crazy assumption. Does anyone have any feelings, and again, you're not expected to come to all, to both of them, but spacing them out or having them on consecutive days, or it doesn't really matter? Is it just kind of whenever, whatever we can do, and if you guys do it?
I think you should just, personally, this is Commissioner Madden, you should just do what floats your boat, and then see if we like that, unless you don't want that decision, and you want us to make it.
A lot of it will come down to availability of.
Right, exactly.
Because there are regular meetings, but, yeah, I'll, let me look at a calendar and kind of fool around with stuff, and then see how that goes, and get back to you all.
Great work.
And then I will be working on developing the content for those open houses in terms of, and this is just a kind of thinking out loud about, we can also direct the participants to the survey itself, again, because this isn't really scientific, so it's, it's okay if kind of we get their opinions in the open house as well as on the survey. This is also to say that some of the interviewees might decide to come into the virtual open house and say some more stuff for the public or for whoever's attending, and I think that could be an interesting opportunity. So, yeah, just, I was just throwing out some kind of random thoughts about how the survey relates to the open house, happy to discuss it now or just kind of see how it goes, I think we have a good structure there for us regardless.
My, my input to that would be that I've never had any good luck trying to do survey questions during an open house, it's like people don't want to do homework or something.
That's a good point.
Maybe we say, when you hand in your survey, you get this giant, big-as-your-face chocolate chip cookie.
Yeah, I mean, I will say that in some of our planning commission open houses, we directed people to a survey, you know, we talked about stuff, and we had lots of Q and A and discussion during the open house, and we said, you know, if you want to participate in the survey, this is the link, so you can do that on your own time, whenever it closes on this date, and I think that was pretty effective.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, but I think, yeah, in live, live surveying is a bit of a mess sometimes. All right, any other thoughts?
It's ambitious, and we're excited.
All right. Here we go. I'm really excited, and you will be getting emails from me more frequently than you usually do, because we will be kind of figuring all this out, so I really appreciate your time and your input on this, and, yeah, that's kind of it, I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you, Tonya. Anything else before we move on?
Not from me.
Lots of work. Okay, now we're at the end of the meeting, we're going to have staff comments. I have four things to say, and then I'll let you guys say what you need to say. At the end of the fourth, the fourth thing is going to be to introduce Will. So the first thing is, I just have a question, we're in the middle of our cycle of the CLG grant, is that correct, Tonya?
Yes, this cycle ends.
And it's a four-year, two-year cycle?
It's a little less than, I mean, it's roughly two years that you can apply for it, the actual grant terms are.
And so when does the next one, do we have to start getting ready for it?
I believe the next ones will be, our applications will be due in February.
February.
Twenty twenty-three, something like that.
So that's something to think about, you guys, February 2023. The next thing is, we need to start thinking about Preservation Month for 2023. Chris Hoarding Jones, Commissioner Hoarding Jones, had emailed me and said, hey, I haven't heard anything, and so I got online and I looked everywhere in the county to find, and I think that none, nobody, if Rachel isn't doing it, nothing happens, so, so I just want you guys to start thinking about Historic Preservation Month for 2023, and then let's try to get something going then. The final thing I want to talk about before we introduce Will is maybe in August, we could perhaps bundle that approval of the Comprehensive Plan, is that what you've called it?
Strategic Plan.
The Strategic Plan, I'm sorry, with some kind of either a field trip or a three-commission summit, where we all get together with the other commissions and perhaps have a picnic, or meet somewhere, or masks off, let's get together, and then that can start the thinking about Preservation Month, and that can start thinking about CLG grant, and that can start kind of hooking people together, because I think that that's pretty important. And then we could do a field trip another time, too, and I'd like to know if anyone has any feedback about that idea.
Well, at a workshop retreat.
Yes.
I'd be happy to see anybody. I'd be happy to see anybody in person.
If we ever do go into a haunted house, we'll make sure to invite Nick Lealak, because he's the best in a haunted house, because he gets scared, so we'll try to get something like that going, too, another time, and we can have some fun. Okay, the final thing that I would like to do is, and let's just see, does anybody else have any comments, or anything they want to say before we introduce Will? We're saving the best for last.
I had something, and I don't even know how to address it, maybe Tonya, you know, but I think we're all supposed to be filling out our annual ethics thing.
Oh, that's right.
What's the deadline, April 15th on that as well?
It is, ew, it's April something.
April something.
Yeah.
And you should, you did it, you all should have done it last year, I believe, Chris Hoarding Jones did not, because she is a non-voting member, so that's all, we've established, we figured that one out. But if you did it last year, I believe you have to follow that link that is provided to you, I don't, I haven't done it, but.
What's the thing called again?
It's this.
Oregon Ethics is the link, I have it here someplace, now look.
We got one email recently, I believe.
It's the Annual Statement of Economic Interest.
Annual Statement of Economic, so we all need to get that done, except for Commissioner Hoarding Jones, by April 15th?
April 15th.
2022.
There is a link, I sent you all an email, it looks like it was January 26th, or somewhere around then.
January 26th.
And I think you will have already created a login and can go through.
What was that called, Annual Statement of?
Economic Interest. And it goes to the Oregon Government Ethics.
Uh-huh.
Right, there's a, there's a paragraph in, on it, in our new document.
There is.
Oh.
On page thirty-one.
Nothing slips Commissioner Ellingson's eyes.
No, thank you very much for that reminder.
Yep. Is there anything else? All right, at this time, I'm going to introduce, saving the best for last, our new staff planning manager for Deschutes County, and our helper here, Mr. Will Grove. So, Tonya, there he is. Tonya, would you like to introduce him, or Will, do you, how do you want to do it?
This is Will. Well, Will, I'll let him talk about his, his resume, but Will has been with us for a very long time, and he was, when Peter moved up to the Community Development Director, there was a rigorous search for the planning manager to fill Peter's shoes, and Will is filling those shoes, and quite magnificently, I will add, and I'm not just saying that because he's my boss now.
Oh, thanks so much, Tonya. Commissioners, it's a pleasure to be here this evening. I have my undergraduate degree in anthropology, so I exist a little bit adjacent to the work that you did, or at least I did at one time in my career, and then planning swooped me up, and I've been planning with Deschutes County for seventeen years now in the current planning division, working my way up from associate through senior and lead senior, and now working as the planning manager for both long-range and current planning, and so I'll be supporting you in your, in your operations here, and I want to make sure that you have everything that you need to succeed. I want to be personally available to you, so if there's anything I can do for you, you might email, my door, quick Zoom meetings are always available, you're one of our important commissions, and we want to make sure that you have, you have all the support that you need, and there's a lot that you've got, you've got going on this year, and I'm glad you're in good hands here with Tonya, you know, who's, who's showing a great aptitude for this, but anything we can do to help the great work that you do go better, we're here for that.
Well, welcome. And as Commissioner Ellingson said, I can't wait to meet everyone and have us all be together in person, and meet and visit and see what we look like without masks on, right? Are there any questions?
If I can just piggyback onto that comment, you know, our next scheduled meeting is May, who knows, you know, obviously the mask mandate is lifting next week, but we'll see, let's just play it by ear, I think, on terms of, in terms of if we want to do virtual, in-person, or a hybrid, or we can connect closer to that date and figure out, we don't have a direction yet here.
Well, I'm sure as soon as we get a direction, we'll figure it out, and then you can send out a email and have people, you know, pick what they think is the right thing, because I don't want to force someone to come to a meeting if they're not going to feel comfortable doing that.
Right, and as we've learned, it is very, very possible to do a hybrid, and we can do it.
Absolutely.
People kind of want to keep, want to hang out virtually, that is completely fine, and we'll have that conversation later.
All right, thank you. Is there anything else we need to discuss? I do want to let all of you know that every time I come to these meetings, I carry these baskets of cards and bookmarks and things I've made for all of you, and I haven't seen you in so long. Rachel, I had to end up putting yours in a bag, because these are all pictures and cards and bookmarks of architectural value, and it's like, it wouldn't fit in the envelope anymore, so we need to see you soon, or the basket's going to bust.
I would be happy to meet in May for the meeting, that'd be, that would be fantastic.
I would, too.
Yeah.
And I bet Commissioner Ellingson might come meet us, too.
Yep.
We'll just see how things go, okay?
Sounds good.
Anything else for the good of the group? We want to thank Trevor this evening for being our new IT guy, and thank everyone else for working these hard days and then continuing, continuing to work this evening, and I want to thank you most of all for electing me again, because I'm very excited about it. Thanks, it makes me feel happy.
I'm glad you're excited.
I'm always excited. All right, I want to thank you, and if there's anything else, let me know, otherwise, this